Back, we'll call the meeting to orders. Uh, we have all board members present, including our two student representatives. So thank you, everybody, for your presence tonight. Um, we'll get started with communication items. Uh, I'll let you facilitate.
All right, sounds good. So, um, you can see that we have a list of, um, of, uh, reports today. So I'm gonna start off with Ms. Homberg from the elementary. If you wouldn't mind, um, hopping in.
I don't know, do you?
I can go wait on here. Is that okay?
Get my stuff some. Hi, everybody, welcome. As usual, we start with kudos. So kudos to our families and students for coming in ready to learn and for, um, bearing with us with the, the COVID guidelines as they come and go. And, and, you know, the limited visitors. I think that's the hardest one on my heart is that we just can't have families come and go as easily as they did two years ago. But families and parents and students have just been fantastic. And staff worked really hard to start our year off in a good way. So we have five days under our belt and it's amazing. It's been such a good feeling to see the kids with their faces. You know, we get to see their smiles instead of imagining what they might look like. So our hearts are full. Couple of updates for you from the last meeting. Um, lots of what we did in preparation for school was the strategic goals, one, A, B, and C. So we talked last time about the strategic plan. Our staff worked really well on one of the workshop days at a faculty meeting to talk about the strategic plan. We have seven commitments to growth at the elementary school that we created about a year and a half ago. So we review those and we align them to the strategic plan. And then in grade level teams or department teams, all of them work together to create, um, individual team visions, purpose, and goals for the upcoming school year. So look for those by October, we'll have those formulated. The plan for me is to put them on posters and hang them in every classroom so that they're very visible. And then in our front main entrance too. So when our families can come back in or when they're here for conferences and events, they can actually see our efforts there. Literally literacy bootcamp, the end of August was fantastic. We had on an average of forty-seven staff per day, and that's just from our Paintsville area schools, grades K through eight. It was fantastic, lots of learning, lots of, um, new knowledge gained on how to apply literacy skills. First of all, what that means, and then how to transfer that to what we're doing in our classrooms. Uh, we're in year two of seven mindsets. We're into classrooms now thirty minutes a week, and that's been going really well. We're working also on our MTSS structure. That's our multi-tiered systems of support. It seems like every time I meet with you, I give you an update on something that has to do with interventions. Um, this year we're changing power half hour, and we're including all of our interventionists with our classroom grade levels for thirty minutes a day. So that gives us an average of seven adults working with a grade level for thirty minutes of targeted intervention based upon fast bridge data that we have. So I'm really excited. That'll roll out in about a week and a half. So again, I'll give you some more updates at the next meeting. Um, upcoming events of interest, family groups start this Friday. That's a big deal. That's where we have fifty-four groups, little family members. So there's a kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grader in a family. And if you all were adults in our building, Bruce, you would have a family of children that are just yours. You might be family one, Thomas, you'd be family two, Ricky, you'd be family three, and so on. And we meet monthly and review those seven mindset concepts that they're talking about during SEL time in the classroom. Our fourth and fifth graders are being trained as trainers to lead those groups. And the teachers get to keep the, and adults get to keep those families forever. So at the end of this year, our fifth grade students graduate, the family stays the same, and we add a new kindergarten friend. So we really have that adult connection, and we're providing leadership for our fourth and fifth grade kiddos. Really excited. This has been in the making for a year and a half, and we're finally ready to start. So ask your children about family groups on Friday. Um, we also have a connect time speaker coming in, um, talking about, um, what it's like to have screen time with little children and how to balance that. Um, Dr. Eric Skansen from Recore is coming in to do a presentation to our families October seventh from five thirty to seven in our cafeteria. So we're just trying to keep that bridge going with parents, um, as much as we can during this time. Do you have any questions or concerns?
My little sister is super excited about family time.
Yeah.
Super excited.
Good, I'm excited too.
Okay, stop at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, from a secondary update, um, David was not able to be with us this evening, but I do have his update. I think, right here. Um, so a couple of things that he wanted to, uh, make sure that he shared with you. Um, first and foremost, um, the next, uh, homecoming week is the week of September twenty-seventh through October first. Uh, he's pretty excited that, uh, the credit union has done a, a, um, kind of a homecoming launch for us over the past couple of years. Um, this year, the proceeds from the, um, from the credit union, um, tailgating event are gonna go to our PAPHAPS. You know, our PAPHAPS are kind of a cool feature that we have to make sure that we have some resources. And, um, so that was a, a really welcomed, uh, focus for, uh, the high school. Uh, coronation for that week is scheduled for Monday, September twenty-seventh. Um, there's gonna be a pep fest that will likely be outside to avoid having everybody in together. Um, so we're, we're talking about options like probably the baseball field as an idea. Yep. Um, the other thing is, uh, school pictures are scheduled for September twenty-third. So not gonna lie, we put that on our calendar, 'cause school pictures are kind of a big, kind of a big deal in schools. So, um, those are the things that he wanted to just kind of share out as, as the, um, the highlights over the next couple of weeks. So if you have any other questions or, or comments for, uh, David, just, uh, either shoot him an email directly or you can let me know and I can get the word out. Okay? Um, activities director, you will see he's actually out coaching at the moment with his, the fifth and sixth grade kids. So you'll notice that, um, there's full operations of the first activity season with the PAC. Um, seventh and eighth grade volleyball program. Been able to keep the kids in the building instead of practicing, um, elsewhere, so that's been phenomenal. Um, it's also been really enjoyable to host the different events, volleyball, football, really seeing people back in the, kind of the typical capacity of what we expect or what we are, we're used to. So that was really nice. Um, the fall schedule for twenty-twenty-two seasons are currently be done, being done for cross-country, football and volleyball. Um, homecoming week is in a couple of weeks, just like David mentioned. Um, and then there's some of the highlights for the coronation, cross, home cross-country, home volleyball, and, and the home football game, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, thirtieth, and, and first. Um, he also wanted to make sure that you are aware that the, um, banner project is, is still in the works with the intention of, um, being completed for winter sports. Okay? Um, next, how do I close that? Um. There we go. And I will turn it over to Matthew Kowson.
Great, good evening. Um, well, it's been quite undertaking, but we are open. The PAC is fully operational. So we are staffed seven days a week. Our weekends, we're staffed eight to eight, Monday through Friday. Uh, with our office being the main from eight to four, and then we have PAC staff that come in four to eight. And Saturdays, we're staffed right now eight to three, and Sundays noon to six. So, uh, we're giving lots of tours. Um, usage is picking up, and most time when people come in, they just kind of, their jaw drops and they just kind of look around and are pretty amazed. We have a, a large group of pickleball players from Richmond that just can't believe that Paintsville could build something like this. So they just, they just keep saying that. They come and, and play, and they're just, uh, pretty amazed, so they're kind of jealous, so. Um, but yeah, things are going well. We hosted a staff mixer, um, for us, Welcome Back, and we had, uh, staff playing blacklight dodgeball. I did, I peeked in there, but I heard Mary was pretty aggressive.
Well, my aim is terrible.
We had pickleball going with the staff. We had, uh, people walking the track. We had, um, uh, group exercise class going. So, uh, it's just fun to see and to truly have a community center now. So we're really looking forward to this winter. Um, we already have, it's around twenty-two weekend tournaments booked. Um, more are still coming in, so that will be definite, uh, revenue generator for our district to help offset some of the operational costs, but also even more so as a, as a benefit to our community. Just some positive economic development to our community too, so. Um, next step will be to work, uh, with our CTE staff. And I've got a, in the brochure, we've got a survey out to community members of, you know, okay, we have these great CTE shops and innovation center, and what are you looking for? How would you like to use that? So we're in that conversation. We wanna, uh, tread respectfully with our staff, 'cause, you know, they're learning new areas too. Um, and they need to get kind of their processes and how would that work with mixed use? But we have, we have a lot of excitement and people talking about, you know, using that area too, so. Um, our fall brochure is out, as you've all seen there. Um, we got our first puppy class. Um, it was set for the courtyard last night, but we needed a backup location. So our, actually our, um, computer lab at the middle school, we took out all of the computers out of the center. So it made, and it has, uh, vinyl plank, waterproof vinyl plank. So it worked great for our puppy class last night. So, um, lots of new classes and new activities. We're really trying to reach out and see what the needs are for our community, so. Our PAWS currently at ninety-eight students. Uh, preschool, we filled all of our preschool, and we filled preschool plus, so we have waiting lists there. And we did just come off a summer preschool. We had special funding for, uh, summer, um, kind of a, I don't know if I'd say, call it COVID catch-up, but there was some money put there. And a positive thing is we are able to roll over an extra eleven thousand dollars for next year, so we can offer that program again, so. Um, which is exciting. That was free of charge to our preschool families. Our Bulldog livestream is going well. We sold out on sponsors again. We, um, I think tonight, I'll take off in a little bit here, but this is our fourth event, I think. So we're doing all the home volleyball and the home football game, so. Got a big, big viewership, uh, last Friday for football, and, um, I would think we would tonight with Monday too. But, but it's so exciting seeing the gym full of people too. So we don't mind the stream viewing down this year that people are there, so. Um, otherwise, otherwise in your package or pass out, this is our summer report. This is what I submitted to the city and township. I was at the city council meeting last night for their budget meeting. Um, we're requesting the same amount. What it really does is the money that we get from the city and township helps offset our costs so we can offer affordable programs to our community members. It's a good partnership. I think it's well over twenty-five, maybe thirty years that we've been having that partnership with our city and township, so. Any questions for me?
There's a lot of new floor space and a lot of new projects and a lot of things going on. Are you, um, anticipating needing more staff?
Oh, boy, yeah. We could, uh, I'm, I'm kind of tired of waking up at three forty-five in the morning and thinking a million things and coming into work at five, but, um, yeah, we're, once we get some processes going. Um, we do have PAC staff now, but I think we're gonna need more, uh, office staff too, that we're gonna just grow into it, so. Yep, absolutely. It's stressful on all of our staff, so, yeah, it's been quite an undertaking. It's not like just building a building and there's a lot behind the scenes that people have no idea what, you know, which is good. People don't see us, they don't know, you know, that means we're kind of doing our job, but there's a lot to operate on, um, a community center. Um, my big project now is getting those PAC parties going. That opens up another level of complexity for just staffing, and I'm blessed that I had some good staff for the PAC. Um, but it's hard to find people to work to right now, so.
Is there opportunity like with the entrepreneurship class and like growing the party package or something like that? Like helping to build some of the programs and doing the marketing and like having students help create or?
That would be great, yeah. I don't know where they're at. That's good, I can ask that to at least if they have a whole marketing unit yet now or, you know?
Maybe if that's the area they need, like they kind of real life experience and look at the data, what's working, what's not.
Absolutely, yeah. That would be helpful, so. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right, and next up, Steve Guzzi, our first, his first official report. Short of you last time, so here you go.
Here we go. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, just, uh, update of what I've been working on is, um, just trying to wrap my arms, first of all, around the whole software program of the HBA system in the, in both the schools so I can help diagnose problems and issues that may come up with the, they're too hot or too cold. And, and been doing a lot of training with that, so I can, can there again, wrap my arms around it and help with the process of figuring things out. Uh, we've also been doing some boiler training with Erie and Brad. Just that those new boilers are, um, they ran a year, but we wanna, wanna keep up on the training with that and learn, learn how to operate them properly. Um, next would be, um, just the elementary summer project for next year, the unit event. There's just been a lot of questions and things I need to follow up on with, with that project up and coming. And we should have a update coming up next week, I believe, Janelle, on a full update on that from the architects or on what's going on with that project for next summer at the elementary school. Um, I've also been, uh, just really trying to learn the custodial process on what, what all the custodians are doing, how they're doing their processes, what they're using, trying to recommend some, some changes for them to improve their efficiencies. And, um, and also doing some equipment upgrades for it, for them that'll increase their efficiencies, help them make, do their job better, and, um, create a better environment for everybody here, students, staff, everybody, so. Um, my, my overall goal with, with that is to, um, eventually have, um, some checklists created so that there is consistency across from everybody to what they're doing. If the substitute comes in to do something, they have a checklist to go by on how they can perform the job and, and do it right and keep up with things. So that's both the high school and the elementary, and there's definitely some areas of improvement I can see already that I, I think I've, uh, helped, helped some things, um, with, with the, with the people working and giving them some good ideas on how to, um, make their job easier and, and perform better, so. Um, some exterior site projects, um, just starting to, um, wrap my arms a little bit around this hot hog complex coming up. The tennis courts, been involved with them a little bit, and, and don't have any solid answers for you on, on that stuff. Just know that I'm working on some things with that and, um, and trying to, um, get some information to, to provide for everybody so, um, so it's not a, so it's set numbers so, so that we can, we can talk about something that makes sense and, and have some information that's reliable, so. Um, also with the exterior, trying to get some of the tree trimming done in both locations, the elementary and the high school. We started on the northwest side already over there, but, um, we're gonna continue to do that around, around the, the high school and over at the elementary school also to, I think, uh, help improve the, um, the first appearances to our school district here. I think will, will help with, with, with that a little bit. They just need a little, need a little tender loving care a little bit out there, so. But, um, that, and my last thing is just trying to, um, uh, I have a new person that just started a couple of weeks ago. I have another new, uh, custodian starting the first of October, and then trying to, um, get a pool of substitute custodians um, that I happen to have the best of luck with, but, um, it's on my radar is to just get, get some people that help out when, when people are sick or, or something, so.
There, I assume your summer staff is done?
Not quite, no. We still have a couple, a couple of students.
I'm gonna say the way the grass is growing now, so. You can use the extra help, I'm sure.
Yep, we still have a couple of students working.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good.
And thirteen football, so, but, um.
Well, you presented, I am a fan of the checklist. So in my career, I have dealt with that a lot. Sounds like a real simple thing, but they work.
Yes, yeah.
And a lot of times you might have just some little thing, but it takes nothing to check it off as you go.
Yep.
And everything's done right.
Yep, the consistency of, of just even, of just the, um, of the disinfectants that they use or something, just making sure that we're all using the same stuff and, and, uh, and from one side of the school to the other. And if, if there's a little variation in that right now and how, what they're doing and what they're cleaning with. And, and I'll, um, do my best to get it, get it consistent and, uh, and, uh, get that checklist going, so. Yeah.
Are we still following the same protocols for cleaning, cleaning after classes and whatnot as we did last year?
Not quite. Uh, we, 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 we're, we're, we're disinfecting and doing stuff, but I, I, last year it was a whole different level. So I can't say that we're doing everything, but yes, we're, we're wiping down tables and, and things and, um, um, lockers spraying them and doing that. I, I can't say that they're, we're doing that right now and, and things. But any touch surfaces, I know I've talked to my staff and, and we're trying to keep up with touch surfaces and, um, and, and doing that, but, um, you know.
I would say that I've, I've, all of the, I still see, um, all the spray bottles in all the classrooms and, and it is still on the radar of the staff. It's, it's a good reminder to send that out again. You know, I think I did last week, just as a, again, reminder to enforce, reinforce with our kids, you know, being, being, using good hygiene, but we can also reinforce with staff. Hey, take that, that couple of seconds, spray down the tables and, and make sure you use the stuff that's in there.
Yeah.
I know it was really excessive last year.
Yes.
It was, it was too hot.
Yes, it was a lot to it, so. But I, it's above, I think, where we've ever, if COVID wasn't around. So I'm confident that we're, we're, we're doing a good job. So it's kind of in the middle between excessive, what it normally maybe was or something, so if that answers your question.
The students I've spoken to, it sounds like cleaning protocols and, and reminders to, for, for hygiene are all in place.
All right.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Yep, very much. You bet.
All right, so, uh, next up, we have our distant, our district assessment coordinator. So Don, I'll have you come up and kind of get set up. Um, so we, we have this on, um, you know, and, and I'll let Don kind of essentially take it away and, and walk through, uh, but I, uh, this really is, you know.
Version, if you have that on yours, I could use your computer.
You can just have this right here.
Okay.
Um, uh. This should do it.
We'll figure it out.
Um. Maybe just try reloading again, and it usually.
I can't see the screen. I ranked out there, so. Um, right there.
So, oh, see, there is, there.
And then, uh, over here. There we go.
Oh, all right.
All right, you all have this, and there is, there's a lot of stuff in a very short amount of slides. Um, I already shared this with Janelle, and we all know that the testing is becoming a situation where it's, it's there because we have federal legislation and we weren't able to do any changes with it. So the first thing, the news is true, okay? Everything that's out there was, is true. We, as a state, as a nation, we did worse because we were in a situation that nobody knew what we were doing. Um, not gonna, not gonna make any excuses for it. The one thing that if you look very closely, that is a really small type, more than twenty percent of our eligible students across the state did not take the tests because of one reason or another. Whether it was that they were on quarantine and the school district had the opportunity to decide what they were gonna do for makeup. We had a huge number of parent opt-outs, and we don't know how that would have impacted it. When we look at some of the, when I look at some of the parent opt-outs and some of the different things, some of those kids that opted out in Paintsville would have been in that meets or exceeds. So we have no idea how that impacted the final results. Um, this is not an excuse, but this is how we felt all last year. If you know anything about the Goldberg experiment or experience, we give a simple task and we say, make it as complex as you can. And that's what it felt like happened last year. So some of the things that were happening was every time we'd go into a Zoom meeting with the Department of Education, they were saying, oh, maybe you're testing and maybe you're not. But do all this work in preparation for it? Well, well, just like you did the year before, we didn't end up testing because on March nineteenth, the world changed. So it was a situation where we were kind of holding our breath. Results, we're, we're told the results would not be used to identify schools that are in need of assistance. And now what do they say? We've lost all of this learning. It's not saying that Paintsville school is going to be in, a, a school that's identified as needs assistance, but now we're saying the entire nation fell behind. I think they are skewing it a little bit with that. Um, we didn't know what was gonna happen to brain person learners that. They're able to do at home. Security, I don't know. We had to offer it to everybody. Um, I came in on two Saturday. To say that it would be a not take. That doesn't count in those scores that come as far as where it's located, as far as meets, exceeds, does not meet. We had a large number of parent opt-outs, and also we chose that the instruction time that we're gonna have with our kids was so valuable. And all of the different learning models that we had and everything else was making things difficult. And the biggest thing is this is a one-time, one-shot, high-stakes data point. How did you feel the day that you took it?
Not great.
I, I'm, I don't remember, and I'm not picking on you, but I don't remember it was the ACT or that day or if it was.
Oh, it was the ACT, Lord, that was not a good day.
Okay, but if, you know, if you are feeling terrible and it's the only day that it's being offered, it's a one-shot deal, and it makes it very, very difficult. So it's not an excuse, it's just let's remember some of these things. Now we have here. Um, this is, you know, overview of the information that you can look at. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going into it in detail. The first one is I took the information, Janelle Paul, or emailed me and said, hey, this is coming out. And then, what can you tell me about it? And she kind of laughed at my optimism in, in putting, who would indicate increases? If we look across the board, all of the state, the entire state, we saw a decrease in ten percent. And part of it is going to be for, and that's for math, and we have the same thing for, for reading, and we have the same thing for science, even though you're only gonna hear the test results that are gonna be focused on reading and math. We do have to test for science as well. When we get down into individual things for Paintsville, this is going to include all of our students, whether they took the MCA or the M task. We have had such a small number of students that took the M task that I didn't pull them out because we would get into some data privacy issues that would come in there. As we're going to do some of the things that will come up a little bit later, and this was breaking down into buildings. Um, and, yep, it is what it is, and we just have to own up to it. Now what do we do about it? It's going to be a big portion, um, that's going to come in. The other thing that I want to show you, and I swear that the people at MBA, MDE and the webpage people guarantee their jobs 'cause they change things all the time. You have to look for them, they go, where did it go? I see some heads shaking here, like, yeah. Um, where all of the data that I have comes from the Minnesota Report Card that any parent could go to, but there's not a good instruction manual on how to get there. Uh, it's gonna be slow. I want to just give you a couple of steps, and if any of you want to know how to find the data or want some specific stuff, let me know, 'cause that's part of what I'm here for. There we go. All right, so when you get this Minnesota Report Card, it's showing up funny tonight, but you would end up going here, and, um, it gives you the choices here. Um, it's all the way down to are our students mastering the standards? And there's one right under here that's going to say Minnesota Test Results. And that's the one where all of the information is going to be available. Then you have your dropdown here, the default is going to be statewide. You can look at the high school, the middle school, the elementary school. You can look at any school across the state that has taken this, and then you can break it down. And that's part of what, um, we're going to be doing. So in here, you just hit the arrow, it's going to look at it. And if we put Paintsville, it's gonna, we're gonna go with high school. It gives us that option, and then it comes in. The one thing that you have to realize. It gives us that option and then it comes in. The one thing that you have to realize when you do this, and it's showing up a little bit funky, a lot of people get really frustrated with the data because you get this far and you go, now what? If you don't hit the done button, nothing shows up for you that's going to make any sense. So it gives you that opportunity to pick if you're going to go a grade level, if you're going to go for reading, math, science, if you're going to then disaggregate it and look at students that are free or reduced lunch, um, boys versus girls, all of those things, you can segregate it out and find out what we did. So that's the main source and I would say that I've had a couple of parents that say, well, we read in the paper. That this is what happened to our scores. But until you look at it and dig deeper, you might not have a real good idea on what it means. So if you have any questions on how to use that, until they change again, I know what I'm doing. Alright, and then.
The next question.
Yep.
Go ahead. Do we have a sense of the schools that were compared to in this report on, did they have the same opt out? I mean, is it kind of like that's what most?
I will say that that one of the things with my time being freaked out a little bit more with retirement is I'm representing both Paintsville and MDE and I'm looking at some of the same things. We worked hand in hand with what was happening and talking to Patrick over there. He's, you know, I went over there about two weeks ago and he said, of course, of course. And I went, yep, and he said, and opt outs, and he said, here's the thing, and he said, how about you guys? Did you have parents that are employees of the district that were opting their kids out? And I went, yes. And then they told their friends and they told, and when the teachers are opting their own kids out and somebody finds out about it, yeah, opt outs were tremendous. That's why 20% of the eligible students in the state, that's part of why they didn't take the test.
This, you can't even compare. I mean, I look at this and I go, that's not even a, it's like a total different dataset.
I know. It is, but Pearson has a strong hook on lots of things.
Yep.
And they are saying, yo, we need to do something, sell more curriculum, they can do all of those different things. And the last thing that we're going to go over here is going to just be things that we need to consider. We're not going into this and going, ah, not a big deal. And here's the list of things that, what are we doing to address the concerns? First of all, instead of using that single data point from the testing, we have, we're well on our way, just like Mary said, and I'm going to sound like I'm repeating what she said and we did not plan that. We're doing periodic benchmark testing for reading and math with FastBridge and that's going to be all the way through our eighth grade students. We're looking at the possibility of coming up with something in the high school as well. We have MTSS interventionists and we're looking at finding out where the kids are and making sure we address the problems and rather than it being a great big deficit, what happens if we catch it early and we have some of those funds to do that? The return to in-person instruction, oh my goodness. Now, as a teacher, everybody else, it was hard. If you were at home for any portion of it, whatever our learning model was, if we run two days in school, two days out of school, then we stayed, it was hard. And, you know, we looked at everything and seeing kids and seeing them here and seeing them interact with their teachers and their friends and everything else, I think is going to be huge. We're looking at the entire student focus is on that social emotional. What kinds of social emotional impacts have the last year and a half had? And if we're not physically and mentally healthy, we can't be academically healthy as well. Um, deeper dive into the MDE data. So Janelle and I had talked about this earlier today, looking instead of the way it's presented by the state, looking at longitudinal. What it says is the eighth graders. Well, your class as eighth graders would be very different than your class as eighth graders. And is it something that we can identify with that grade level moving through and how do we adjust our curriculum and everything else? Ensuring a balanced learning environment in all subject areas, open communication with everybody. And that's, we're all involved with that and just looking at review of the state's standards and understanding that we've got new standards that are coming. They've been delayed because of COVID, so we've got science standards coming, we've got social studies standards that are changing and some of them are really major changes. So we're going to have to address it. In that process, remember when you implement something, it's not perfect right away. So we'll get through that and figure it out. Um, literacy, literacy training and the implementation for the elementary and middle school. I am going to plead a little bit of ignorance. I can tell you that we did it, but I didn't participate, so I don't know a lot about it. And then there are going to be other things that we're going to do all the way in the process and finding out what we need to do and how we need to get there. It's not going to go away this year because we're not going to see a change in the federal legislation. They gave us no options last year. We had some campaign promises that we're going to get rid of it and nothing's happening in Washington.
I think the thing that I wanted, that I just want to reinforce is I'm grateful that there's, this is the, but this is the more so. I mean, we know that there's a lot of focus from the Department of Ed when they release test scores. And the hard part from a school district perspective is that Minnesota Report Card is what some parents have learned to go look at as an accountability piece. And so I think that's why it's important as a board that you know, so that's what that means. But here's, here's the way in which we really do measure and have a better pulse on how our students are doing. And there's, and this really is what's meaningful to have impact for our kids and our instructors. So thanks for taking time to outline those pieces as well. Any other questions for Don?
Anything else for me?
When you look at the numbers and yet there's all the reasons for them, right? Doesn't make any difference. People are looking at it. If somebody's looking at it coming at your community, what would I do? All of us would get in and look at the numbers. We're not going to dig down deep, so we try and dig down deep for all the reasons. It's just that if the numbers show something, we'll take note of that. Does it make a difference or does it not make a difference? But you're still going to take note of it. I go back to the one that you had where our overall
number, we compared it to other schools?
The first one? Yeah, okay, that kind of looks a little bit on the ugly side. Okay, but that's what somebody's going to see. And it equates to all the reports. Well, somehow we have to look at them. Now, it's not that we have had, you know, as well as I do. We have spent years trying to fix some of this stuff. We had a time we didn't have any money. So for all of you that weren't there at that time, Cheryl, you already mentioned. When we had something happen, we, a teacher we had, retired, we never replaced them. Well, we were doing everything we could to adjust for that. And there were things we had to do just because we didn't have any choice. Now we're back in the other mode, but you've got to always be working hard and we have areas that it's taking a long time to come back.
And I think, go ahead, Don.
And one of, one of the other things that in looking at that, you know, so many people look at how much of a drop there was, but where were you to start out with? And when you made that comparison and that's, that's something that the media and everybody else and going in here, you're looking at a quick and dirty way of making that comparison. If you look at where the state is, where are we? When I do that deeper dive, it's hard to pick and choose and go, we're going to look at Eden Valley Watkins and we're going to look at MBE, we're going to look at ACGC and Recore and our surrounding schools. Not so much how much you lost, but where were you to start out with? Because if you were already lower and you can look at the data as well as I can and you lose and you, you've got, but let's just make a number, let's say you had 35% that were proficient. So that means meets or exceeds and you dropped by 10%, you're at 25. But if you were at 52%, you have a bigger area that you can see some substantial change there. So changing that narrative is the hard part and, and you know, I think Mike has been really good when he asks the questions, but when he answers the information out initially, it's state fair time, we have to do it now.
Yeah.
State fair. I have, that honestly bugs the whole day like that. Absolutely am that.
Absolutely, but where are we going to have the great Minnesota get together?
Oh, my goodness sakes.
Thank you.
And because it's too late to plan, for all of you trying to run this school and all of us, it's too late to plan everything at the state fair time because it's all in motion. It's like if you have the data in Zoom, get it out in Zoom. I have contacted our legislative about that, our legislative people, because this is, that's just absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah, it's kind of like, you know, you have to do a budget, but you're not going to tell how much money you have, right?
Exactly.
You know, so.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And as I said, if you're looking at that and you want to figure out how to get into it deeper, I might, I, as long as they don't change it, I'm pretty good at it. And if we run into something that is one or two clicks, that done button is the big thing to remember. When you start filtering things out, if you forget to hit done, you're going to go, it's broken again.
It'll be interesting to see with all the interventions. I mean, I'm thankful, you look back a couple of years, we would talk about more intervention strategies. Like we didn't know COVID was happening. Thankfully we have that stuff in place because we're going to need that not more than ever. Like the training you said, seven teachers in a great unit, like those things. It'll be interesting to see the data and how that's impacting that we're catching more individuals one on one versus waiting for a test to happen.
Yep.
And so I feel, I mean, based off of everything that I've heard over the past couple of years, I feel confident in the systems we have now.
Yep.
It's taken a while to build, but that I feel like we're going to catch students quicker to get them up. So that's fun to watch the data.
And FastBridge gives that period of the background with benchmarking, so that we've got the data so that we're there.
Yes.
I'm going to go line judge.
Alright.
Good luck.
Have fun. Alright, so COVID-19 updates, this will be probably a little bit briefer. I know if you want to just kind of do a time check, it's about 6:45 and then you have to be out at 7:00. So just, you'll probably be fine, but just, it'll be good. Um, so a couple of things, our COVID task force has been meeting. And we met last week and we are scheduled to meet again this week, just really to be responsive to anything that would have come up over the first week of school. Um, there really is, this, there's no additional or new information to present to the board because there's no change in recommendations from the group. Um, we are keeping our eyes on some of the uh, some of the matrix that some of our larger districts, Anoka has a matrix out, Delano has a matrix out, you know, so I'm, and many of the other surrounding districts have adopted this matrix as well. We're watching that to see, you know, to go back to your, your question, Bruce, a while back of what is the number, what's the percent? You know, a lot of it does is it is consistently aligning with 5% again, so we're going to, we're going to just um, keep an eye on that. Um, but there are not any recommended changes or. Thank you. That's what we're here for.
I know, always are.
That's what we're here for, right? Um, so there are not any changes in recommendations for you. I did want to let you know that one of the questions that I know has consistently been kind of on the radar for, for our staff and really, and I know that as board members, I've had some of you just ask questions about like, how are we going to handle or what would this be like if we would have an outbreak and how would we do instruction? And without an online learning, you know, without a school, without an online learning process. Um, the Minnesota Department of Education did revise their definition of a homebound instruction. So homebound instruction is something that's very familiar to me as a special educator because it's, it's a process that we would use as a team to decide if a student needed to be, have their education in their home. And so they've really expanded that definition so schools can use that in those, in those emergency scenarios. So I feel like we've got an option for us, if maybe, so that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable. The other piece that I just want to, very high level, and there's really nothing to say about it because I know nothing more about it, but the, the president did issue a statement about vaccination mandates. I have not heard anything from the Minnesota Department of Education to this point about what that means for our, for our schools. Um, and as soon as I hear anything, I will make sure that I pass that along. Um, but I want to make sure that staff are hearing that, you know, I, we don't have information to share at this point because there's just not been anything. It kind of feels somewhat like crickets, you know? I don't like crickets, but I'm just, you know, there's not much to share about that. I do know that there are some districts who have kind of taken a stance just to say, oh, there's not much to share yet because we don't know. But that's, so that's kind of where we are is we don't know what that's going to mean for us yet, okay? Um, any questions about the COVID-19 update?
I think our issue, one thing what he was talking about is with everybody.
Yeah.
So it'll be a while for it gets all sorted out.
Yep, exactly. Okay, so the enrollment projections, so I just pulled the data. Um, you'll see that I actually included, so the first tab on here is what it was last year at this work session meeting. And then I, so I'm going to just keep a running longitudinal data share, okay? So one thing I do want to add that is, that is not in there is we do have 11 early childhood students, early childhood special education students enrolled. And they do generate funding, but it's about a 0.4. So we count about three of them. So for our 11 students, we could add about, you know, three, four, 3.5 students to that count. But there, because it is variable, that's why it's not usually included in the count, okay? Um, you will see, so our, our original number is 898. Um, I know one of the big questions that's often asked is from a budgetary perspective where we were hoping to be as closer to that 9, 10. Um, so there, you know, as, as we watch for the next week, week and a half, two weeks, uh, we're going to have to, to keep an eye on that and see what that means from a budgetary perspective and, and adjust those, the implications with how that number of students um, in our, in our starting point. October 1st is the, really the, the date, that is the, the funding date. So we'll keep, I'll do another report in the September 28th meeting and then we'll have a, a discussion after that October 1st date. Okay? Um, just a little bit of, of the ins and outs. I, I had to do a little bit of digging to find out where these kind of numbers, the total elsewhere, where they're going. I had to do a little digging. So that was really from the end of the school year to the start of the school year. So you'll see that we ended up with a net positive of seven additional kids, whereas, you know, in the big picture from a net gain, okay? Any questions on that?
So just like there's somebody asking, total enrollment as of today includes?
It's K, this includes our K-12, 898.
Yeah, that's good. And that's down from last year.
That is down from last year.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Sorry, it's going to be in the paper.
Yep, yep, it will be.
Okay.
Yep. So, um, that's, that's the, that's, I did not include early childhood numbers in there because they were not included in the previous. But I just wanted you to know because that does, they do, it does generate funds for us, okay? Um, the other thing that, that I, I'm watching for is last week, um, the governor announced some additional funding for the loss. And originally, I got to find my notes because I have the percentage written down in here. Originally it was like a, we had 20, 24% um, funding, um, I guess flow to help eliminate the loss of enrollment. And that's going to be increased to about 46% of a cost. So it'll be a little bit more. It was not a huge dollar amount for us, but it'll be some money. So we're going to keep, I'm going to keep an eye on that as well.
I have a question about the enrollment to another district. I just thought of this. So if you look at, you know, last year, the number that enrolled to another district, if they stayed enrolled, would we count them as a student enrolled in another district this year or now that they're part of another district? These are new students that are enrolled?
This, this is different.
So it's new students, they're a different population that are, okay?
Yep. This is not a rollover.
Okay.
Yep, no, that's, there is a cumulative list, but that is, so once this, this is kind of like at the end of the school year to this school year.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's really where that.
I didn't know if it was like the same students and you're looking at it, but it is, that makes sense.
Okay, thanks. You're welcome. Okay? Alright, um, so the referendum information. So I, I'm going to apologize that I didn't get this to you ahead of time. Um, I, I got some of this information like just briefly before I got here, so I wanted to make sure that it was put together. So I am going to, I'm going to just walk through this document and, and here's kind of the, the information that I will share out and I'll share out with our community members. I'll share out, really just that people understand now is probably a good time. If, you're welcome to take on the, watch this if you want, but it is your call, okay? Enjoy your evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so a couple of things just to, as we walk through. This information was prepared by Ellers. Again, I think Ellers is a beautiful resource for us. I, the levy. Um, I, the levy finance system is absolutely astronomically intricate. And so it's just been, I've been really grateful for their support as we've been, um, digging this information up. So here's just a little bit of a historical information about our, as we tell our story as to why we're here and why we're moving forward. So in 2012, you know, that's, that's the, um, operating levy that's gonna expire in 2023. At that point in time, and I didn't put a ton of information in there because it was just, it's, it's old, right? I mean, in 2012, it was really general operating expenses. In 2014, we went to the voters for, um, capital levy. Okay, the capital levy is, was for various upgrades, um, repairs. It was a pretty specific levy. Um, and so you'll see some of those areas that are gonna kind of maybe refresh people's memories like, oh, that's right, this is what we did and this is why we did it at that point in time. In 2019 is when we brought the bond. And the bond was to, um, to bring some of our CTE programming, to bring our, our new, um, PAC. And, um, so that's gonna be pretty fresh in their memory, right? And then, um, so now we're here in 2021 to ask for an operating referendum, which is again to renew that general operating expenses. We need to continue that we have not received a new set of funding sources to, um, support and continue with the work that we're doing. Um, and, and it really is about sustaining our programming and maintaining our facilities that we have now built, right? So it's really about the operations. And I think as we walk through this and we have the discussions, it's really kind of that reminder for people that buildings are for bonds, operating is for learning, right? And it's, and it's how we, we, we maintain and sustain the learning. I did wanna make sure that we also plant the seed because knowing the discussion that the board had, that our capital funds for the, and let me see if I can figure out, I did figure it out. So the capital levy that will expire in 2024, there was, that also has supported these areas. It's our technology support for our network, our network administration, our technology integrationist, our classroom, um, our, um, the, um, the technology integrationist and, um, and instructional coach who does it. Really, right, brings them to a digital learning and supporting a curriculum, um, a, a, a framework of curriculum that's a little bit more accessible in a digital world, okay? So it's also, it's how we pay for our firewalls, our mobile technologies, that's our devices. You know, we did a lot of work, we did work with that capital levy. And if we lose those funds and that work goes away, that's a, that's a worrisome context, right? So it's, it's really helping to explain, and I did, I, again, I know I put in 2022, 2023 because I know the board has not determined exactly when that's gonna happen. Um, and then we also have not talked specifically about what is the timeframe? Would it be a 10-year? Would it pick up after the, you know, we, those are some of those things to be determined. But I wanted to make sure that, that people understood. We recognize we're gonna be doing two asks. The first ask is gonna take place here in November, okay?
I think when we went out for the bond, we were very honest with people that were coming back for the referendum at the same time. And I think it was in some of our literature. It's a good idea to stop before, it's their rule.
Yep.
We're just managing them with, with them.
Right, right. So, um, the other piece that I do wanna be really clear about is, um, there's, there's, um, the, the requirements for us to run an operating referendum. It's really specific around the timing that we can do. So you'll, you'll go back and look like we had, um, the bond was run, oh, I don't have the date in there, but the bond was, that was an, an August election. You can't do that with operating levies, okay? So that, this, this timeframe, sorry, has to be done in November, okay? And the language that we use is really prescriptive by statute. So I want people to understand that because I think it's gonna be important for them to know, especially if they remember like, oh man, when you did this capital levy, it was really spelled out, like all, everything you were gonna do with it. It was a different type, it was not the same type of an operating referendum, okay? So, um, this really is kind of walking through, um, a little bit about just the history of, of what the operating referendum is for. Um, we're gonna talk in, in future slides about the property taxes and how it applies to which sets of property, um, and, and how that revenue can be used. So this is kind of just a, a general summary of some of like the components of what an operating, operating referendum can have and cannot have. Um, for us, it, we, we did go out for the maximum request of 10 years. So we're, that is part of our, um, that is part of our plan, okay? So as we're going through this, um, if you find, if, there's something that you want me to look, think differently about or have, um, as we do this presentation to the community, please let me know. And I'm, and I'm happy to make any of those tweaks or changes, okay? I need to come down here so I don't do, there we go. All right, so there's, there's two things that I think are gonna be of question. Um, one of the things that is, is who gets, who pays the taxes for this? And, and one of the things in our area that I think is gonna be really important for us to remind people is that for, um, like seasonal recreational cabins, they don't pay on an operating referendum. And agricultural land, so like our big farms, they're not, it, this is not levied on their whole acreage. This is a one-acre homestead. It's their, it's their home, garage, and one acre, okay? So that's always a question because it's, it would be a, it, it's just often a question. So this is one of those areas that we talk about that, okay? Um, so this is a chart of, this is our, so this might look familiar to you as you guys are doing some of the prep work for the levy, um, or for the referendum. But this is the, the breakdown of our district. And this is the column that we're gonna pay attention to for an operating referendum. This column to the right is applicable for a capital levy or bonding, okay? So this is really where, so 60.3% of the, um, of the referendum falls to our residential homesteads, okay? Our farmers, their one acre is reflective right here, okay? Um, so this is just a little bit of a trend and kind of like the history. Um, back in 1993, um, the average referendum authority was only $332 per pupil. Um, today, um, it's 12% of our general education allowance formula. That's, that's, we, we bank on referendums and levies as a, a significant part of our funding. And the reason for that is really because, um, we have not had the inflationary, uh, funding from the state to keep up with our stating and with our, just our general, um, with our, um, the general formula for, that, that comes in for each of our pupils, okay? Um, so this is, this is a little, the visual of that data. So this is what, um, what it should be if we were gonna keep up with inflation. The, the dotted line is what it truly has been from a funding without using levies as a funding mechanism for schools, okay? So why we have to do that, um, so there's a, a couple of things that, um, that have also played into. Um, oh, that goes back, did you see that? Um, that's cutting off words, huh? I didn't, I'm gonna have to fix that. Um, but the, the biggest thing here is there's, there's some other, um, costs that have not been kind of held in check that school districts are responsible for. Um, one of those is, and I, and I would assume you've probably heard about this in the past. There's a thing called your cross subsidy. And that really is the cost of providing special education services where the federal government has not provided the adequate, um, the, the promised funding. And so school districts have to, um, they are responsible for the services. So those costs are somewhat, um, they're, well, they're mandated costs. And those, those feed into the, the cost of a, um, of a, a district's operations. Um, and really, outside of either finding additional funding or cutting your budget costs, those are the only two options that are available to school districts. That's why there is the reliance on the referendums, okay? Timeline, here's kind of what we had talked about. So by August 20th, you, the board opted to move forward with the, with the, um, the special election. Uh, we have notified the commissioner, um, absentee ballots will be available starting on Friday. Um, there is a, we are having our election judge training so that, uh, people can come in and do their absentee ballots in the district office if they would like to. Um, so that will be available starting on Friday. Um, well, there, the absentee ballots are available on Friday. They can start their voting from September 18th to October 18th, okay? Um, and then our election day is, I said that wrong. I need to correct those dates because that's not right for when the, when they can do their absentee ballots. I've got that coming up, so I'm gonna fix that.
Now?
Yep.
Is there a legality of how the, the, it's on the ballot? How they ask for a yes vote, that it's, uh, raising their taxes and it just, you know, that's such a...
Yeah.
Uh, you know, yeah, could, I mean, you're raising your taxes by voting yes, but you're also helping the students or, you know, they should put something like, put that in there.
I know. Yeah, that's very much statutory language.
Yes, yeah.
It is, yep. So, um, our specific information, um, the existing authority that we have is 3925 per pupil. That's what will expire in 2022. Um, the new authority that we are requesting is 531 per pupil unit. It would begin in fiscal year 2022, um, with payable in 2223. So for one year, there would be an overlap of 3925, um, and it would expire after 10 years. Here's the, the wonderful ballot question and the way it has to be written. Um, and, and I think, you know, it is, I, it is what it is. I, I think the more we can tell the story is, yep, that is what you're doing, is you are voting to raise your taxes, but it's for a purpose. And your purpose is to support the school and the programming and, and what we are, have going on within the school, okay? Um, one of the other pieces that I, I do wanna just point out is that there is the, this does allow for, um, the inflationary, the, uh, ref, um, to be, the proposed referendum will increase each year by the rate of inflation and be applicable for 10 years. So I have the data around, MDE has a chart that is just really specific about what it's been in the past and what it's projected to be in the future. Um, I, I guess I didn't put this in here and I didn't ask for it to be put in there primarily because I think sometimes it can be somewhat confusing. Um, but I feel like that's, that's information that I would like to get to you so that you have it as if somebody would ask a question, um, just to understand what that means. So that it would just have that, kind of that checkpoint. Because I think they need to know, we're not talking like 10, 15% here. I mean, this, this ranges anywhere from like a 0.8% to a 2% to a, you know, it, it's, it's all over the place, okay? So here is the tax impact for our taxpayers. Um, if you take a look at a, if your house value is $200,000 for a, an annual, for the whole year, it's $191 or an equivalent of $16 a month, okay? I think this is gonna be an important, um, story to tell. The other piece to this is, again, just a reminder, this is our residential homesteads, our apartments, our commercial, our industrial property. Our, our, it is that one acre of our farmstead and it is not our seasonal homes, okay? So those are, that's how that tax impact lays out. This chart looks different if we're doing a, um, capital and a bond because the tax rate that everybody pays is different depending on your class. So it's a little bit more simple for this, just not super simple, okay? Um, so this is where we sit in relation to our neighbors for our property taxes. Um, you'll see that, um, a couple of things that I do wanna note in here is that, um, as I was talking with, uh, with Ellers, they made it, they support and, and represent some of our surrounding communities. And there are a number that they, they said, you need to know, they're also going up. Some of them are already, have already approved bonds and have, um, levies that are going to be enacted. So these numbers are gonna be raised. Um, so we are not out of line with our neighbors in, in relation to where our property tax, for our school property taxes are.
So right now, we're the second lowest.
We are the second lowest. Yep.
Do you have any idea where we'd be if it was passed?
When it's passed.
Yep, so when it's, when it's passed, yep, and actually, that's a, that's a great question. I wrote that down. Um, when, when it's passed, we earn about eight, $800. So we'll still be, we'll, we still won't be, here, I'll see if I can make this.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
Sorry.
Because I remember that when we put it together, we were not at the top. Even after it passed, we were still middle of the road.
Yeah, well, and, and that's also part of why, let me see if I can, um...
It's okay.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
Um, so it's, it would be 531, so would be at, and that's at 618. Um, so we're, we're at about $800. Um, so you're, you're right around, because, but, and again, I can tell you that some of these are rising. So when it's all said and done, we're still gonna be in, we're still in the ballpark.
And that's what I remember as well as...
His projection is in the middle.
As, as everybody else is ro, is rising here in the, in the coming year, that even with us rising, we'll be right in the middle.
In the middle. We're still, we're still in the middle of the pack, yep.
At least we're not the lowest.
And so is bottom.
And we're not the highest.
Yep. And this, I think, is also a telling, um, that this is the voter-approved referendum authority. And so you'll see that this is our, we are, you know, there's a couple that don't. But we, when you look at what's out there, our, our group average, we're well below. And the state average, we are nowhere near when it comes to having our voters approve a levy authority. So, um, I, I feel like the, the 531 again is a, is a conservative ask and I think it's, it's a warranted ask based on the projections to maintain where we are, okay? So this is a slide that I, I, um, I'll be honest, for the first time I read it, I thought, why in the world am I putting this in here? I can't even, I can't even tell you what this is. But when she explained it to me, I think it's really important for us to keep in here because I'm gonna guess families don't understand and know that they can get a tax refund for some of the levy information, okay? So it's a matter of a form, for, for the tax. If, if they use their, a tax preparer, um, they just, it's a two-sided form and they're often eligible for a tax refund, so.
Very simple.
Yep, so I, I think that I wanted to keep that in there. Um, I, so I would add the disclaimer, I'm not a tax advisor. But, you know, it's, it's worth it to take away that.
We got our money this one a couple weeks ago.
Good, so there you go.
I think, I think that's super important because we do have a large population of retired people. That's always been a conversation and concern if they have a fixed income. So I do think the more people realize that this is available, use it.
Absolutely, yep. Um, this is a little bit more about those three, um, refunds or deferrals and credits. Um, so I will, I, and again, I'm not gonna go into each of those by detail as much as it is because I, I would envision having this in a, a handout that people can take with or they can access online as well so that they can look at, you know, what that means and, and which one would be applicable to them, okay? So that's kind of the basis of the information. Um, the other thing that I wanna show, is there anything here that you feel like should be more explicit is too... So I'm, I'm envisioning doing two, um, two community meetings, um, that I can walk through this information and just try to keep it as, as basic as possible, um, but...
I think it's very clean.
Okay, so that, here's the other piece that I want to share with you, is this flyer that I, um, that I created and I, I just pirated it from, I didn't pirate it, somebody gave it to me. So I, I, I stole it with permission. Um, where did it go now? Here we go. So I wanna do this one. All right, so this is, all right, people that, where's my Zoom?
Control and scroll back.
Control and scroll back. Oh, I'll look at that. All right. So just a two-page kind of front and back. Um, so obviously it's got, well, I'm gonna have to zoom up when we get closer, but... So it's got all of our information on there, um, just the general dates of, of the, um, of the election day. Um, I did make a notation that, um, absentee ballots, oh, here's where it is. I'm gonna do that again. Whoops, sorry, guys. I'm gonna get wonky like eyes on that. Um, the absentee ballot dates, um, and I asked Amanda to help me with the right dates on there. It is true, so September 17th through November 1st is when absentee ballots can be gathered in the district office, okay? Um, the, and then I'm, I'm suggesting that we do, um, two different, um, public informational meetings. On the fifth of Oct, I just chose the fifth and the seventh. I thought it was a couple of weeks out. So if people had questions, they could come in and ask, um, not being too far out that it... Um, not being too far out, that it falls off the radar, but yet, you know, it's, it's there. So, and a couple of different times. Again, I'll open to feedback if there's, if y'all have
We'd be better off a couple weeks apart on those informational meetings versus
We sure could, yep. I did them different times.
In that same Nation. Time, yep.
You know, it was, but I certainly could expand them a couple weeks too. Yep.
You just, you just, I don't know, maybe it says anything.
Yep.
So when we pass our last referendum, we mail the brochure out to everybody in the district.
Yep.
One of the comments that I recall was people liked it.
Okay.
They liked having it right there. For all of us, we're on these things all the time. It's real simple, right? But we get to those meetings and people don't show up.
Yeah.
So with the elders, do they ever mail a brochure to the mailing list?
Well, they, I mean, we certainly would.
And you give it out to the voters, like
Yeah.
Um, older folks that are interested in the school and everything else, they're gonna see what we just brought up That's gonna increase their taxes, right? If that's the only thing they're ever gonna see. But I think for a lot of that group, and not just them, um, we found out, cause everybody's got internet access, right?
Yeah.
Uh, how many of those hotspots did we send out? Because people didn't have super good access, they have their phones. So, you know, you don't always know that in modern technology that we're hitting up, have people like that
Yeah.
Survey mail.
So I think there's, there's two things. I guess, um, I, this is a super, like, this is a super basic Slide that could be turned into, we could take the data off of here and turn it into a one-page mailer without any problem. You know, that's
So for most people, cause you, you have people that are retired that were rocket scientists virtually.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's not that they can't figure it out. If we can give them a piece to read about what we're doing
Yep.
That, not that person might just go probably into computers, but
Yeah.
Um, we have lots of people with a lot of ability and a lot of those older people have a really good idea of management.
Yeah.
Many of them have been involved in things like, like operations.
Yep. Yep.
Um, I just think if we can get the data to everybody
Yep.
I, I think we would have more success.
And I Yeah, I, I certainly feel like this is, this could be, we could take all of these kind of different talking points and put them in like more of a Q and A format and mail it out In a one-pager versus, I was thinking this, this would be easy to print and have people pick up as well, if they come to a meeting, if they don't. Um, again, there's, I think there's multiple ways, but I think the, the, the simplicity of helping people understand What an operating referendum is for, your operating referendum, what it can be used for. You know, it need, we need to remind people that if, this is not gonna be, we can't use this to, um, build buildings. You know, we can't use this to, this is to maintain our space. It's, it's to pay the people who we have providing the programs. It's to keep, it's to pay our bills, you know, I mean, some of like, some of the things that's just like, this is what we, the money we need To operate the facility that we have, right? It's our people, it's our production of our, our programs. That's, I think, the, the kind of the key pieces. Um, I can certainly, I've got, I, I, somebody's gonna have more
I think.
Um, finesse and, and kind of creativity to put this into something that's a, a one-pager that could be mailed out, and I'm, I'm happy to do that.
So we have these public meetings and so, again, been on the school board for a period of time. Most of them, we're trying to figure out all the excuses how well it went after we're done, cause we had fifteen people show up, or twenty people, and we're all really happy about that. Well, this is kind of important, but sometimes we're missing the group of people that do have good analytical skills.
Yeah.
People that are retired, are interested in our school.
Mm-hmm.
If they have the information, even though they might not have a student here, maybe they've grown up here, but someday if they're gonna sell their house And the school is active, they all know it's gonna make a difference in what they're gonna sell their house for.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, we bet.
I mean, it's pretty simple, but getting them the data, I just think is so important.
Yeah. So maybe one of the other things that we could do is, so I, I guess, Bruce, that's an important point for me to hear, like, where are the places that we should So maybe instead of holding a, an evening community meeting, we go, I, I can set up a time at the, the local coffee shop. And just where, where people have coffee as a, you know, like, go to the firehouse or have a, so that it could be in a place that, or The, if, if there's a, a, a senior dining center that, you know, just to be able to have an informational table.
So we did that too, that I recall. And when I went to, there was a handful of people.
You know?
Yeah.
I would, yeah, I remember Bob going to one, to Wishingdale.
Okay. Yeah.
And I had to be in that day, and he sat there by himself for two hours.
That's funny.
If you can find a group that's already meeting, Alliance Club.
Yeah. Yep.
Going to the churches on Sunday morning, or Catholic Church on Saturday night.
Mm-hmm.
If you can hit these groups that are already there.
Yep.
That's the ones you're gonna hit the most people, so, um, I'm trying to find who they are.
Okay. Sure.
I think the multi-channel approach, I mean, it's not gonna be one thing.
Okay. Yep.
And so on our website
Yep.
Having the FAQ.
Yep.
Having a very visible button, like, here's the information on the Aubrey referendum, that's one of the first things.
Yes.
Then you're resharing the FAQ on social media. Um, you're, like Facebook Lives, the demographic skewed to older people on Facebook, and so I think that is a good place for, if the video was saved Or even the slide presentation, you know how like for working to like click on a slide and like, you're hearing the audio behind it.
Mm-hmm.
We could have that slide presentation basically there, and so people can just click on the slide, that's about their tax impact.
Yep. Yep.
And it shares, I mean, there's just so many ways. That's the hard part as well, information, you have to do all the things unfortunately. Because one thing, just the newspaper, just a mail piece, isn't going
Yeah.
To be enough, it's that people feel that this isn't a surprise.
Yep.
And communicated, do they have plenty of opportunity to ask questions, it's been everywhere, it's happened, oh shoot.
Yeah. Yeah.
How come we're not hearing about this, even though we're like, we did all these things.
Yeah. Yep.
So it's like, we need to over communicate.
Yeah.
I brought it out earlier as well, the idea of having a, um, live stream
Yeah.
Commercial, essentially, just to frequently ask questions, the, the basic information, the live stream, we do have a, a large population, and, and again
Yeah.
Love it, yeah.
Yep.
Of, of grandparents or elderly, you know, people in the area that don't wanna come sit in a crack pack gym right now
Mm-hmm.
That watch a live stream for that.
Even live streams are happening for athletics.
So That's why I'm paying my life.
That's what that's about, yeah. I was like, I saw your thing.
Well, I'm
Yeah, I thought it was, it'd be like an ad, yeah.
Especially, especially the athletic live streams and
Absolutely.
Instead of the community ad commercial for a month, you know, here, we, it's, it's the referendum.
We do our, our referendum information.
I was thinking of a program during halftime of homecoming. That's like way outside the box. But if not, that might be a little too much, but even putting someone on the scoreboard
Yeah.
And then handing out brochures to everybody who's in the football game.
Yeah, just have students even come, you know, maybe that's some of the student reps or, I mean, whoever could do and hand out like, here's information.
Yeah. Informational. Yep.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Or we could just make a public announcement that they're handing out brochure right now, we gotta, we might just need you to know.
Cause I think our biggest
We need your support.
Our biggest
Cause those are the people that are gonna vote for it.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, you need your information.
But they're also the ones that might not vote for it, might just
Right.
If, if, yeah.
They just need to know it's important, you know, vote for it.
If everybody in our district, every single employee voted And their potential
Yeah.
Yep.
Partner voted, if they have one, like that is a huge
That's a big population.
Democrat. And I look at it, it's, it's, our biggest failure would be is that somebody said, I didn't know about this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because if, if they have some people know, then that's their choice, but if they don't know
Okay.
So there's
Yep.
Yeah.
Then that's our problem that we didn't communicate.
Yep. So, um, a couple of things that I'm, kind of a couple, couple of takeaways. I think I'll scale back and just do one community meeting.
I think so.
Try to find some additional, um, um, I, Matt, I did talk to Matt Dickhausen about, um, running a commercial. Um, and I, I think that he, he said it's a great idea, thirty seconds goes really fast. So we just wanna be really mindful about what it's for, how to, you know, so that we're not overwhelming, but yet also maybe, you know So he was really on board with that, I think that's a great approach, using our, we're gonna do our town hall on September twenty-fourth. Um, hmm. Is that what it is?
Twenty
September
One, two, three, twenty-seventh, sorry.
September twenty-seventh? Is that what we're
I think even on the old news letters.
Anyhow.
I have.
Yeah, so, I, it's, but I think, I think that's kind of where, you know, we're, try to hit different demographics and then, um, be present with, and we'll get Um, I will have somebody that's a little bit more, I mean, I, I love my technology stuff, I'm, I'm not a graphic designer. I'm not the person that makes stuff beautiful, so I'll tap into somebody that's better at that than I, to get the information that's here out.
We'll let you delegate wherever you want to.
Okay, lovely, uh, to figure it out.
But then again, you know, as a parent, the number of emails I get from teachers, which is great, if each Like teacher said, I'm gonna commit to including it on my signature, the link to
The link to the
To like more information.
To the information paying you to on the website, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll include a blurb on every communication to the future.
Yep.
Like a, a family, like reminder, check this out and please vote yes, you know, something like
Uh, they answered it.
Well, that's true, they, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
So, yeah, okay.
Check out this information on our website.
Yes.
Check this information, get out
Yes.
Big time, right?
Yes.
Be educated and vote.
They could do that other vote and not from the district.
Be educated and vote, yes.
Be educated and vote.
Yeah.
And that's actually a perfect segue, cause I did put in, and I know, I think I've, I've shared it with you in the past Um, about the roles and responsibilities and it's upside down, um, but as a school board member, actually, because it's a, it goes both sides. So it just is some reminders about our roles, uh, because we're employees of the school district. We just need to be mindful that, um, we, we want people to be educated, we want them to know about it. Um, but we, we really cannot persuade the vote, um, with our official, in our official capacity. So there's my, there's my
But they can have their personal
Pass on their personal, their personal Your personal time, yes, and so, um, one of the things, like when we did our bond referendum There was a lot of, of community members, board members that did, donated their own personal time, they used their personal accounts, they went outside of Their official duties and really, because you're also community members, so it's a whole different context. So there's just my little caveat reminder of that.
I've got, well, I've got two things, and one is just a reminder that one of the hardest groups to get out to vote is the elementary school parents.
Yeah.
So we really, you know, concerned.
There are also that, it's an interesting comparison with the conversation we just have, that the elementary staff communicates with families weekly. Either as a grade level or as a classroom, and then there's the population we're trying to grab.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
So let's utilize that.
And can't you just tell them, please get out and vote? You don't have to say yes or no, but it's, it's easier to remember.
Yeah, right, for sure, yeah.
Please vote.
A lot of them will copy what I have in the, in my update and then just include in their family.
I noticed that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it works.
It works, I would do the same thing for them. Actually, I do the same thing at work, so.
The other thing I had a concern about is, I want, we wanna keep it simple.
Yep.
But as a school board member, if I could ask some deep questions, I need to be prepared. There, there are gonna be some people in our community that are gonna dig a lot deeper
Yep.
And come up with some questions. You know, why, why is this less than last time and yet it's increasing our taxes? That's the one question I'm afraid of. And I need the information on how to answer that again.
Say that again.
This request is lower than the last one.
Why is it Yep.
But it's increasing because we're How did that happen last time? Some of that money is now being coming in another direction.
Yeah. Some of it is, yeah, some of it is local optional revenue.
It's, it hit it to us, it hit it to us, yeah.
Yep, yes. So, and, and it shifted to become, and so it's, it was voter-approved dollars
Right.
Um, is less, but there is, there are, is still a levy authority that was a local revenue authority.
Right.
So that, and that will remain, so then while we're asking for less than we did the first time, this, this base of what we had
Right.
Did not go away. The extra on top is what went away.
Right. Yeah.
So it as, it really beefs, it provides us with an opportunity.
Well, we just need to be prepared to answer those questions and we bring them ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm happy to bring, um, to bring Jody and Greg back, you know, they did say if, if we want to have people email them I'll be honest with you, I said I'd prefer they, they reach out to me, so I know what kind of questions there are, are being asked. And then, um, I can have a better pulse on, you know, if there's something.
I think that's the way to do it.
Yes.
Uh, for any of us, cause you have to know what's going on, and if we funnel through you quite a bit, that's have an idea.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, so, and, and, and I think I, in my opinion, I, it's in, completely appropriate to say, that's a really specific question. Let me get back to you because here's whatever. And then, and then when we get it, I get the right language, I get the, you know, then, then you have it for the next time.
Yeah.
But you're not, you don't feel, I, sometimes I feel like if I don't have the answer immediately, I kind of go You know, and so it gives me a moment to pause and make sure I have the right information to push out.
Yep.
In June, must be sometime in June, we had it written out really nicely in one of our previous emails. It's just that when you have that contact, you're not coming back to look that data.
Yeah.
So it's not like we have to reinvent anything.
Right.
It was, well, it was all on the front of us at one time.
One, one of the meetings, I think it was in June, so if you can go back, it might be the first thing we're
Yeah. So there's a, there is a PowerPoint in June that really outlines, it's got a little bit more of the history of, of the enrollment data. It's got, but the, I, the reason I didn't grab some of that is because, um, it goes into the capital levy in addition to
It wasn't from these guys.
Oh, no, I know, it was on Matt's information. It was in one of his slides.
Yeah.
But I didn't, in, I didn't ask them to include any of that because I didn't want it to be
I went down Nope, I went down there.
Confusing, but, okay?
I think one thing we did with the bond one is, there was a, like a kind of generic FAQ, and then we all responded with what other questions we were being asked. And that helped build all of that FAQ. So like, if we could think through
Oh, sure.
The questions, then, that's, I think that's how we did it last time, is it, and that, cause we have different perspectives of what we're gonna be asked.
Did you Did you have just like a shared spreadsheet that you would put your questions on?
I think it was on I think it was on a Google
Or a, a Google Doc?
I think so.
So that, or a Google sheet?
Or he said, I don't remember, but I remember responding to it with
You know what? I, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna create, um, I'm gonna create a Google form, cause I think the only thing I worry about is having All of us responding to messages and having, so I'm gonna create a Google form that you can just submit, if you have a question. This was a question and it'll funnel into one spot for me, I can sort through it and then I can push it back out if needed. Okay? Cause I think that would be a way that you can just, then too, you know, like, hey, and I'll look for themes, right?
Yeah.
And if we know that this is a theme that's coming up, then we have to push out some information around it.
Right.
Would that be helpful, I think, as board members, so that we can have a, okay?
You're right, cause maybe it wasn't a Google Doc, cause we would have all went on it, and we sent it to us, and then we responded back and put our own Armups on individually, privately.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the, I feel like this is our big launch, it's the big official.
This is
Yep.
Now it's cool time.
On the mailing
Yep.
On where everybody, everybody's got a post-up, it's gonna make a difference who they are. Um, and it's out there else, most likely. But nevertheless, I'd be interested in what Jody and, um
Yep.
Um, Ellers thinks about that. She'll have data on schools that have done it, schools that haven't.
Yep.
I'd be interested to see what that is. I just, it was very interesting when we got the data back, when we passed that referendum On the bond, I heard lots of people that absolutely thought it was outstanding to be in the mailbox.
And I think that the, the, the thing that's a little bit different about that, um About that, uh, that project is that it's really easy to highlight a beautiful new building.
Right.
And it's really, I mean, it's, this is, I, I think part of what's more, and, and just in all honesty, it's more difficult for our, our taxpayers and our voters to understand Is that this is not, this isn't the shiny new building that's, you know, cause this is gonna be awkward.
But the votes come back to us and, and wanna do boilers and everything, so if you look at the list that they came back to us On their mailed survey, it was not about the new building. That was down the list a little bit.
Sure. Oh, so
It was about very basic things. The number one on the top was boilers, if I recall. And I've got all the emails, I can look it up and get it to you.
Okay.
But the survey results were different than that, and you would think that's, right?
Well So the survey, maybe I'm, Bruce, maybe I'm not tracking, can we just back up a minute? So you're talking about the survey.
The survey was the information about what we were doing. And we started with a certain, no, we started with a survey and
But we're not gonna start survey now. Do you just talk about, in general mailing is
We just wanna get data out to people.
Well
And that's
Do I get mailing?
That came from the vote yes committee, that pretty brochure, that was produced by the vote yes committee and Education Minnesota helped us. And I think that's where like that pretty brochure went saying, and we put on there, oh, yes, and that, and I think we did get really positive feedback from that.
And that's Yes. Okay. Okay.
Right, that was the, the, and the district, I don't know if they did an actual mailing too, I think it was, they did the mailing for the survey, but the vote yes
Well, there's a legality of the mailing they can do, and how it's written
Yeah.
Right. And that's why the vote yes committee did it.
But you can solicit, but we have to get the information to everybody in the district, cause I think we will find lots more people than we may
Yeah.
Be aware with something that they can look at
Yep.
And analyze, um, why we in favor of what we're doing.
I mean, would that be an option that
Oh, yeah.
To help pull together?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, cause I, I think, um, yeah. Okay? Uh, all right, so beyond that, um, I guess the next piece that I just have is any, um, request for information and roundtable.
We got the golf course. Golf course lease, have you, everybody have gotten it?
Oh, I missed that.
Yep, no, skip.
Holy cats, sorry.
Skip.
The golf course lease, oh gosh, that would have been bad. So here's, here's really, I guess, it, it looks different than it has been in the past. So in the past, it was a, more of a narrative bulletted item. Um, so this is just a much more, this was drawn up by legal counsel, so you'll see that it is very much a legal, a Um so this is just a much more, this was drawn up by legal counsel, so you'll see that it is very much a legal a legal lease document. It's a lease document. Um the terms and conditions, so um it it is a fifteen-year lease um versus the previous, I think it was thirty. Is that what we looked at? Was thirty years? Um so it's if you had a chance to review the terms and conditions, if that looks, if there aren't any questions, uh this will go on the um the September agenda with a motion um and and approval. But this was really the the purpose was here to give you an opportunity to review it and take a look and see if there were any questions or again, a very, very legal document, lots of legal lease to it, but the the foundation um Matt did a lot of work with the golf course prior to his departure to make sure that they were they were in agreement on on all of the con- concepts.
This was written by their attorney.
Their attorney.
Have we had our attorney? Anybody look at it?
Um I can
In trying to maybe let's do that.
I can do that.
Nothing else. Just send it by ours to make sure that there's not some legal jargon that we are missing as
Yep.
not being
I actually really like that idea.
Just that I I didn't see anything in reading through it that jumped out at me, um but just, you know, have our
Yep.
attorney and just read it as well.
I will absolutely do that.
Pretty reasonable cost for peace of mind for fifteen years of a lease.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I actually thought it was probably written by ours.
Yeah, I exactly. I don't
But since it's not, I've
Yep, I'm fine with that.
We're the we're the owners. Yeah.
Yep, we are. And I thought it was a little odd that there, but I I didn't know the history and I'm good. I'm good with having ours reviewed.
Yeah. Yeah, just that that small cost for a fifteen-year lease.
Perfect. Yep, agreed. Okay?
Yeah, then round table, anybody have any information for upcoming meetings or feeling like they have any concerns, issues that I think?
Just personally, um by the meeting like this, natural word, I'd like to see some long-term financial projections.
Okay.
We now have an idea what the student counts are. We kind of have an idea where things may lay out. And I know Matt talked about it, but we were so preliminary, we didn't have any idea all through the summer.
Yeah.
Now some of our stuff solidifying. I'd like to do it earlier than wait till December, about the time we have to get this budget done.
Yeah.
Yeah. What does it look like? What if?
Yep.
Um
So and and I think I think we can pull that I can pull that information together um with Carrie and we can look at it. Um I I I would like to wait until after October first to have those seat numbers and then I think we have good data to start with.
I think I I I'm okay with that. If it could be the next meeting like this where we can use it.
Yeah. Yep.
First meeting, I agree. Yep, have a conversation.
Yep. Sure can.
'Cause everything we're doing has to do with the big picture.
Yep.
And starting to solidify itself a little bit.
Yep, can do. Okay? Anything else?
All right, and we will turn the meeting.